All right. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Item number two is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. Item number three is town managers' report.
Hello.
There she is.
Hi, how are you?
She snuck in? She did.
I'm in it, I'm in it. You know me, I'm always trying to multitask and do too many things. I have to rush into every meeting at the last possible minute. So, updates to this report. We had our annual shape inspection on August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Overall, we did very well. We did have some, you know, repeat findings and some things that we need to fix. You never come out of those with nothing to fix. It just doesn't happen. We did get complimented on our use of Power DMS to manage all of our policies and training, as well as the overall attitude of our departments and wanting to be proactive. And they had said that a lot of the things, you know, the department heads, if they could fix it right then and there, they just did it right while they were standing there. So, they were appreciative of those efforts. They were also pleased that most of our deficiencies were minor. The repeat findings mostly in the area of policies that we're still working on revising. That's a slow process. It's just a matter of having time to get all of that done. So, I did let her know that we're actively updating the policies that they still want us to work on. The one that bothered me a little bit was the management of our first aid supplies, because that came up last year, and we really should have been on top of it this time around. But we'll keep working on that. They were very happy to see all of our IFAT kits, so we got those. So, I'm also happy to report that I was able to complete the grant application to the Community Resilience, Resiliency Partnership Program. And that application is for a comprehensive communications program. I feel lucky to, it was kind of a crush, but we got it in by August twenty-ninth on time. That application includes a request for an upgraded website that will integrate with a three-one-one system to improve our ability to reach residents in emergency and also allows residents to report back into us. So, a three-one-one system, rather than being strictly an outbound notification system, allows for two-way communication. So, if you all remember back to December of two thousand and twenty-three, my one-week date on the job, when we had everything going on with the town flooding, trees down, power outages, we really struggled to keep up with communications. And that was identified as a big issue when we did our post-event debriefings, both internally here in-house and with the county and other agency partners. So, we're focused on incorporating a system that will not only do text messages and emails, which a lot of them only do certain things. We want one that's also going to be able to do landline phone calls, because we do have a fair portion of our population that really doesn't do technology all that much. So, they really want to get that landline phone call. We also will be able to leverage the system to get out other critical information, like town meeting dates, like when we're having special informational meetings. You don't want to inundate the system, but sometimes last-minute due dates. People often forget it's the last day to do your dog registration, and then they get hit with late fees. So, we can leverage the system for things like that. One of them, we want to have a community forum for something that we're planning, like if we wanted to talk about the Sandy River watershed and how that flooding impact is going to go and geomorphic studies and things like that. So, it has a lot of possibilities. Fingers crossed that we get that. I did have A.D. Cott review my application. We went back and forth over the course of the last day there, just making little tweaks and updates. So, hopefully, we get it. On September third, UMF held a community engagement meeting to discuss ways we can all collaborate with each other. It was very well-intended, including myself and managers from Wilton and Eustace, Selectmen, Morton, Landry, O'Neill, and Govan were there, but don't worry, they didn't sit together and they didn't discuss any town business. County Commissioners Schofield, and I did spell his name wrong, so I apologize for that, I will fix that in future reports, but Commissioner Schofield, Savio, and Fowler were there, Senator Black and Representative Bunker, along with one other representative whose name I did not get, several school superintendents, representatives from Maine Health or Franklin Memorial, members of the university's Board of Visitors, and others. Lots of productive discussion, which we tend to have in these meetings. The challenge comes into turning it into, into some actionable items, that we actually get something done out of it. So, more meetings will come. I did mention that I was a little disappointed to see so little town representation. It seems like the normal players that show up at anything for these type of events is Farmington, Wilton, and Jay. And Jay didn't come to this one, but, you know, one of my questions was, how are you working at engaging the other communities within your immediate area to get them participating as well? One other announcement that came at the meeting is that Joe McDonnell has agreed to continue for an additional two years past this last year. So, he will remain the UMF president through six, seven, eight, through twenty-twenty-nine, June twenty-twenty-nine. So, congratulations to him on that extension. Budget season's already coming up pretty fast. I've already started the process of developing all of the spreadsheets for our, for our department heads to start completing those. Happy days, Joe. Have a good time. Coming year is likely to present some challenges, so it's important to get started early this year. There's a lot of unknowns with how tariffs and the market are going to be affecting our costs. Some vendors are already hedging their bets by raising prices early, some are taking a wait-and-see approach. It's likely we will experience cost increases, particularly with anything to do with construction, fuel, energy, all of those types of things are going up. Fortunately, we have locked in fuel prices until July of two thousand and twenty-six. Electricity is, that's a real, that's a real hard one to predict. We are running very high in most of our electricity accounts this year, because although we've managed to lock in most of our electricity supply accounts, we have no control over CMP's increases when it comes to the delivery charges and the service charges. And those went up both in January. And in January, they raised thirty-five percent and seventeen percent with the service fees and the delivery charges. And they just had another increase in July that I don't have enough data on to calculate what those increases are. We're probably going to look at another one in January again. So...
It's almost to be expected.
Yeah. And that's one that's really, really hard for us to predict. So, all I'm going to really be able to do is look back at history and say, this is how much they're increasing every time, and try to hedge that bet going forward. So, we'll, we'll see, we'll see how that goes. One other thing I want to put into this year's budget is to combine some of our overarching umbrella-type costs into a single cost center. Things like work comp, IT management, our payroll taxes, those are kind of the cost of doing business, and we pay them no matter what. I'm open to the discussion, but I don't see a whole lot of cost versus benefit when it comes to how much time the staff spends separating all those out in our billings versus what we actually gain on the reporting side from being able to look at in each individual budget. To me, it's not a whole lot of bang for the buck, but that's something I'll be wanting to discuss as we move forward. Last thing, I want to remind everyone of the public meetings scheduled for tomorrow, September tenth and September eighteenth. These meetings are informational for the public. September tenth will be held at six P.M. here in this meeting room. Myself, the treasurer, and the assessor will discuss transition to a fiscal year and how to interpret, how to interpret the property value cards that are going to be coming out from KRT next week as they wrap up the revaluation. It's very important, and I can't stress this enough, that people understand that the percent increase in your property value does not equate to the percent increase in your tax bill. They are not the same thing. The property value is going to go up by double digits, but your tax bill is not unless you really have not been reporting, you've done major increases to your property, major upgrades, and have never reported them. That's the only way you would see anything on the order of a double-digit increase in your tax bill. The tax increase this year was three percent. That was our budget increase. So, all things being equal, that's about what people could expect. However, we know that that's not how it works exactly. There's going to be fluctuations depending on whether your property has increased in value beyond just the market, or if you've made improvements that haven't been caught on prior tax years. That would cause your bill to go up more than the average. And if you maybe had your property devalue, some properties will, if they haven't had any upgrades and they're getting very old, they do apply depreciation factor. So, your property could have, it'll go up in value, but not to the same extent as the rest of them. So, too many variables for us to predict until we get the values. But I would point out, too, that tomorrow's meeting is the only meeting at which we will discuss the revaluation, because after that, the tax cards will go out, and at that time, you want to be contacting KRT for a meeting, which that number will be available on the property cards that go out. If you, if you see something wrong with that valuation, it really doesn't make any sense to you, you want to make that, that meeting. If you miss those meetings, you'll still be able to meet with the assessor, though. The meeting on the eighteenth is going to be held at eleven A.M. We'll have a second meeting just on the fiscal year transition. So, that's going to be broadcast, both meetings will be broadcast on Mount Blue TV, but I encourage people to show up, because it's a lot easier to ask your questions when you're, when you're live. Nobody's going to be monitoring a feed on Mount Blue or on our Facebook that's going to ask questions that are coming in that way. So, best if you can show up. That's all I've got tonight.
Just, just to clarify, when are the cards going out?
They're supposed to be going out this Friday.
This Friday, okay.
So, people should start seeing them hit the mail next week.
I know I'm going to be asked that tomorrow.
Yeah, and they're, they will, as soon as you get your card, you can call in and schedule a hearing, or call KRT and talk to somebody. That's going to be more effective in the short run than calling the assessor, because during the same time period, they're going to be training the assessor on the new, the new tax software that we get, Patriot, that's part of this. And he won't be as up-to-date on what went into coming up with those values as KRT is initially. He will get all that information, and we'll have it, but it'll probably be more effective to talk to KRT in the short run, and then we'll talk more with the assessor going forward. So...
Stocks did the revaluation thing also, and I'm not sure how it works, but all our values went up, but the mill rate went down.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure how that's going to...
That's generally what you see, because what really, what drives your tax bill is actually the budget. So, it's like the seesaw. If values go up, the mill rate goes down, and vice versa. We still have to raise whatever we approved in the budget. So, that's, that's the driver of what your actual tax bill comes out to be. And again, it's going to fluctuate depending on how your assessment goes. If you're somebody who, say, put in a new outbuilding and didn't report it through the town, then your bill will probably go up more than the average, because your value's going to go up more than the average. If you conversely maybe tore down an old barn that's no longer there, now you have lost value on your property, because that extra outbuilding isn't out there anymore. So, you could go up less than the average. So, as far as predicting how it's going to affect the individual tax bill, that's not something we can do until tax commitment time. So, there's a lot of, and commercial has even more variables. So, we won't be making any predictions about your individual tax bill at any of these meetings.
Any questions or comments?
No, the only comment, the UMF meeting was informative, it was interesting, and it was lousy with politicians of all stripes.
I was a little, I was a little disheartened, too, that, you know, we're being asked for things that our community might need and ways we could partner, and the immediate response when I mentioned things that we could be doing together or programs we could work on together was, well, we can't do that, even though prior, he had said, well, we develop programs around different professions that the community might need.
Not here. There are a lot of lip service. They've been telling us this for years, they want to work with our community. It's whatever we can give to them, they, you know, and that's the way it's always going to be. Thoroughly convinced. I just don't see any change. I just don't. I'm disappointed in that. I thought this new guy who's really wanted to work with this community, but he doesn't, he's, just puts a lot of lip service out there.
We'll see how it goes. I did make direct contact with Austin French, who is the intern coordinator. So, hopefully, next time we get an intern, it will be somebody local. Not that our intern we got wasn't, isn't great. I mean, she's fantastic, but it would be nice to have that student be somebody local benefiting from the experience.
That would be a very positive step forward, despite peri-pessimistic...
I just, I've lived here for fifty-five years, and we've heard this and heard this and heard this, and it's, it's never gone anywhere. Anytime we want to partner, we don't have any money. We don't have any money. We can't do this. So, don't hold, I, I don't have a lot of optimism. I think it's just more, more of the same.
Remember I've done that?
Yeah, I just, I get sick of hearing the same stuff.
Understood.
Anything else? All right, moving along to department head reports. Questions, comments?
Lack of pictures from the rec department. Usually, she's got eight pictures, pages of pictures.
We're in a while. But as...
She was shorthandish last week, too.
Right, I wrote it, don't worry. But a lot of it is because then we're going into all of our new fall seasons, and so soon you'll have all those fall pictures, plus the spectacular walkthrough and all those things.
But it is great news that Charity is back.
Oh, it's so lovely, yes.
That she's a very key player, a very knowledgeable person.
Yes, for sure.
A linchpin.
Yeah, for sure.
Any, any changes on the day of completion?
So, the roof completion day is still, currently, they're still saying end of November, end of December, I mean, sorry, beginning of December, max. They will be finalizing sixteen, twenty-third. They're supposed to have a set schedule, so I'm hoping by the twenty-third to know a set schedule, and then hopefully, they want to be done by the end of November. So, that's their goal. So, currently, right now, it's getting all the trusses basically put up, actually, which is here. I did bring a little photo, because I don't have photos in my thing, but I got this today and I'm happy. So, to show you what's going on to the roof. So, this is what's going to be structured on top. So, all of the joists is basically all through here, had to be shimmed, one inch to three inch, depending on Lovely Maine and where things settled, and the building is not square. So, that's, I know, shocker, an old building not square. But their hope is still to have the roof membrane, everything on by October thirteenth. Mechanical Services has all six HVAC systems already in hand, in place, so this, as soon as we have those things done, Dawn's Electric Mechanical Services, all of them are good to go, including Cunningham Security, so I'm just gonna, it's gonna be good. That's what I'm gonna go with. I'm gonna be the optimist.
There's an optimist.
There you go.
Okay, we'll counterbalance. And then next time I need help, you need it.
And the police report, sixty percent increase in traffic stops. You really busted last month.
Are you blaming them?
He's already leaving the way.
On a commission basis?
Yeah, well, you know, a couple of different things. You know, we, again, we, I've mentioned a few times about the, the computer-aided dispatch system. You know, they're getting a little bit more efficient in that. We had, saw almost a fifty percent increase in the length or the duration of a stop because of all of the, you know, having to enter stuff. We invested in thirteen-dollar barcode scanners for each cruiser. They're thirteen dollars each. But now, instead of having to manually type in a lot of the information, they can scan it back at the license plate if it pops up automatically. So, I don't know that that's singularly saving time, but I think it's just finding efficiencies in how they do it.
And I think the public is happy to have that type of an increase.
Absolutely.
Yet that's a major complaint, but a lot of areas. Nobody pays any attention to the speed of red lights or any suggestions.
Another piece of it might be, you know, again, we have two guys at the academy now who had been with field training officers, and you definitely lose some efficiencies when you're trying to do the training along with, so getting them out of the way is a good thing.
I was going to say, is that optimistic? Anyhow, I just, that did kind of jump off the page, you know, at this point. I didn't see anything else that, we, we need to, need to put a plug in about the change of the voting place again, for the coming election. I think we have to hammer that early and often.
We're doing a lot of outreach on that, so it will also blow out on the radio and other venues as well.
They're going to be able to play cornhole while we get there, waiting to vote?
If you have an exact wording that you would like to use, we could also do an email blast and text blast to everybody on my faculty sheet, please, three hundred plus.
Diane's the one developing all that, so...
Okay, I'll be checking her, because that could probably help.
You good, John?
Yep. I did, I did, after a meeting last time, I did talk to Phil after, and I asked him about having the crosswalk sign in front of the crosswalk by the first office, and he gracefully was able to put that in, and I appreciate this. It looks good. I think it does, I think it does work. People slow down, try to miss it, and they try to...
Yeah, they don't want to hit, they don't care about people, but they don't want to hit the damn car.
Yeah.
That's embarrassing.
So, since Phil is not here, another update, as of this afternoon, all crosswalks have been painted, because we took it over in-house.
I did, I've noticed that, the ones up, Fairbanks were, were done.
So, will we do that next year in-house?
We're looking at ditching all but the line striping, because they, again, there's very few companies that do it, and our current contractor has probably taken on more work than he can actually accomplish. So, and the work that ends up being, that suffers is usually the handwork, which crosswalks are handwork, you know, stop bars are handwork. So, you know, we, in Winslow, we always did them in-house, because it, it just was, one, it was really expensive to pay the contractor to do it, because it takes them more time, and they charge a lot more for that than they do for the line striping, so...
Well, they look great. They've got a good draw.
They do. We've got all the stops.
And they've got the experience.
Yeah. We have the equipment, so...
Perfect. All right. Moving along to item number five, is to accept a donation of a protective vest for police canine hook from Madison Gibbons, DBA Maine Vesterdog.
So, you met canine hook. Madison Gibbons is a, she's, I think she's a sophomore or junior studying pre-med, and I want to say at USM, just a remarkable young lady. And I'm not sure what her full story is or why, but she's taken it upon herself to engage in fundraising, to put protective vests on every police canine in the state of Maine. I think primarily she's selling custom hoodie T-shirts and, or sweatshirts and mugs and everything. Just a remarkable young lady to take this on, and so she reached out to us months ago and asked if we'd be interested in, in having her fundraise on our behalf. You never know if she'd be able to follow through or not, and she certainly did. Timing is a little wonky. I probably would have preferred having it before delivery, but it just showed up. She made the presentation, so it's a little bit after the fact, but hope that, that you'll support some protective gear for our canine, which we've never had one, or haven't had it for, certainly for...
Is that ballistic material?
It's ballistic and stab-resistant, worth about fifteen hundred dollars. So, yeah, she's been, I mean, it seems like every week on her Facebook page, she's raised money for yet another dog and another dog. So, anyway, you know, my hope was that she'd be, that the vest would have come, and we'd have been able to get her here for, so you could meet her, but she's busy with classes.
It's such a back call.
Anything you'd add to that, you know, like the process and...
Yeah, no, she was just, like Chief mentioned, she was, she's super supportive of law enforcement. She's from Southern Maine, and I was just, I think it took less, it was less than a month of what it took her to raise the money for it. And, you know, she, she truly cares about, you know, the departments individually. She actually sends out different options on, on, you know, what vest you might, might cater to your needs most. I opted to go with the cheapest vest, only because, A, you know, I was trying to be frugal with her, her, her time, and also, you know, Hook's, Hook's needs as a, as a drug dog. So, just, you know, she was willing to buy a vest that was almost six thousand dollars. So, just, just that alone was, I thought was pretty remarkable, not, not really having any ties to Farmington.
How does he take to it?
He, he likes it. He had, so Sergeant Mike Lyman, when he was here, he, he got one from somewhere, and he passed that down to me, but it was like a, it was for a shepherd, so it did not fit him at all. So, this one's much more restrict, less restrictive. He can run in it. I've already thrown the ball for him a million times, and it doesn't bother him at all. He can jump, jump within, work with it, so it's, it's, works really well.
He thinks he's a lap dog?
Yeah.
He liked to be.
Is there a website that she has that people can go to if they want to, or, I mean, is, is she likely to support?
It's on Facebook. Maine Vesterdog, Maine Vesterdog.
Maine Vesterdog?
Yeah, yeah.
Good to give her some publicity.
Absolutely.
Certainly a wonderful effort, and always nice to be able to say, yes, people want to raise money for our communities.
You know, and it was, I think it was in the middle of his fundraising campaign, that the canine preacher with the Maine State Police was shot and killed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, so it just kind of drove home, you know, that, that it is important to, yeah. Yeah, pretty neat. And I, I just loved to see and hear about a young person taking on something like this.
It's great, fabulous. Kudos to her.
And Jesse, of course, you know, he's months back from the academy, so he's on the road tonight. We've got two of them.
Nice. Get out of here and make traffic stops.
Sure, definitely will.
No, maybe, maybe we put a link to that on our Facebook site, too, just to...
Oh, yeah, great idea. Yep, I'll, I'll share it.
Helps some other communities, too. I think that's a great program. Cool?
So, do we need a comment?
Yeah.
So, move to accept this wonderful gift.
Then a motion and a second, to accept the protective vest for canine hook from Madison Gibbons, from the Maine Vesterdog. Questions, comments? Just a big thank you to her and anybody that supports her. All in favor? Thank you for that.
Do we send them a letter from the town thanking them as well, or just, you know, to the Maine?
Normally, the department getting the donation would do that, but I'm happy to...
Send a personal letter from the town, to the organization as well.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Yep, please.
Perfect. Move along to item number six, is to accept an Edward S. Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, Byrne JAG, in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars to purchase one G E T A C mobile data terminal.
That would be the, yeah, so a couple of things.
Be safe.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You good with us?
Yes, thank you.
You can leave the dog.
Yeah, every year, Byrne JAG money becomes available. Usually, it's about in that amount, four to five thousand dollars, and we usually buy some sort of a piece of, like, protective equipment or whatever. But this particular year, again, our, the, with Microsoft discontinuing security coverage for operating, was it Windows ten? So, we've got a bunch that we've got to replace, so we elected to use the money to purchase one of them, rather than use town-raised funds, using that grant. Thirty-nine forty-five was the maximum percentage that we could ask for, which does leave, if you notice in the quote, eleven hundred and forty-seven dollars, or eleven seventy-seven dollars, that we'll pay for out of budget, but that's a huge chunk of savings for us.
Make a motion, we accept it?
Second.
Mini motion, and second, to accept the Byrne JAG in the amount of thirty-four ninety-five to purchase one G TAC mobile data...
Thirty-nine forty-nine?
Thirty-nine forty-five.
That's right, I'm just...
Any other questions, comments, or corrections? All in favor? Thank you.
Good work. Thank you for pursuing.
Yep, and more to follow. We, I think I mentioned it in my report.
There is. Item number seven is to allow Chief Kenneth Charles to update and sign mutual aid agreements with regional law enforcement's agency in accordance... aid agreements with regional law enforcement's agency in accordance with Title thirty-a MRS twenty-six seventy-four.
Just reviewing records, um, realize I could only find an agreement with Wilton, uh, from a number of years ago, um, and overall, we're primarily, um, we do more mutual aid to and from, uh, the Sheriff's Department, um, you know, sometimes when the deputies go home at two o'clock in the morning, um, our officers are out twenty-four-sevens, so when there's a domestic in Temple, when it's in New Sharon, um, commonly they'll be asked to first respond. Coincidentally, uh, Sunday, um, there was an attempted suicide with a firearm in Wilton, and, um, Officer Bacon was the, one of the first to respond over there, so it does happen, um, it's a force multiplier for us to enter into these agreements, um, it's good for them, it's good for us, and what, it, I think, i- if you had a chance to take a look at the agreement that I shared, uh, primarily what this does is it just clearly outlines where's a lot of the liabilities are.
Yeah.
Um, which I like, because I'm selecting, hiring, and retaining people, um, you know, whereas other places, uh, you know, I don't necessarily know and I'm not involved, um, so I have confidence in my people, so when they go to, you know, if they went to one of these neighboring communities, um, yep, we might be liable for the things that happen, but it's no different than if they, it had happened here. And likewise, I mean, if, if someone comes here and makes a mistake, it's on their department's liability, but we agreed to reciprocate, so, uh, broken equipment, uh, you know, civil liabilities, um, you know, again, physi- physical, mental, you know, issues, so, uh, yeah, so it, as much as anything, it's just doing a little bit of housekeeping and, uh, you know, kind of firm up expectations and clarify those relationships.
Is this something that you think we should go over yearly, every three years?
I think, personally, I think, uh, one, I think the thing to consider would be, um, when there's a, uh, certainly a change in the chief law enforcement officer, so change in chief or sheriff, um, when there's a significant shift in the, uh, board of selectmen, that's another time you might consider, um, other than that, I don't think they need to be annual.
Okay.
Yeah, because it says it will agree until the replacement of the chief that the agreement will be made with.
But I, I don't, you know, when's the last time we reviewed this? I've sat on this board quite a while.
Yeah.
And I don't remember going through this.
No.
It, it, it's been a while.
No.
Without a signed agreement, would something, uh, one of our offices did be an excuse or a way out for an attorney to?
Well, it's, uh, I, I think it just, again, I think it clarifies what's going to happen, you know, it doesn't go to litigation to say, you know, if, if our guy goes somewhere else and something bad happens, um, we're not gonna have to litigate, you know, is it our responsibility or is it theirs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it just, it, to me, it simplifies things.
Make a motion, we accept the mutual aid agreement?
I will second that with a question.
Yep. Let me give, let me do my little spiel first.
Oh, I all need.
There's been a motion and a second to allow, uh, Chief Charles to update and sign mutual aid agreement with regional law enforcement's agencies. Any questions, annual comments?
I got one. So this is, uh, the agreements are only with towns that have police forces, the other towns all come under the agreement we would have with the Sheriff's Department.
Correct.
Because they are responsible for law enforcement.
And I think, is, by my understanding, the, the difference with the Sheriff's Department is I think we need one from them more than they need one with us, because they have, you know, they have, uh, different jurisdictional responsibilities. Um, again, the, the board of selectmen, I, gosh, I, I, I would, it would be tough to find the specific date, but, uh, the board had already authorized, uh, the police department to have statewide, uh, arrest powers, so we're sorta covered in some other areas, you know, as far as what we can do when we're not in our community, um, but again, it's this, so the Sheriff's Department doesn't really matter, but, but for us to go and help them, I, I would feel very comfortable, yeah. So if they're operating and they make a mistake in the town of Farmington, or something bad happens, um, it's on them anyway, because they already, this is part of their jurisdiction. Yeah.
No, belt and suspenders works for me.
Uh, question, so there is, there is an agreement with the county?
That's what I'm at, yes. I have not gotten a response, you know, I reached out to each of, uh, each of the departments, Wilton, Jay, uh, Rangeli, Carabasset, and the Sheriff's Department, I have not heard back from the Sheriff's Department or from Carabasset.
Does this allow an officer to have jurisdiction in the town? If, if he wants to arrest somebody?
Yes, that's what, well, set, outside of this, that would be, uh, what was authorized previously by the board, which was statewide arrest powers. Yep, yeah, an example of that, uh, you know, a number of years ago, I had a case, uh, that led to a suspect in Waterville, uh, like, I was able to author a search warrant and arrest warrant, they were busy, couldn't help, but I had statewide jurisdictional powers, so was able to go execute the search warrant and arrest the fellow.
Perfect. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you.
I'll go get dessert and.
Oh, you can't go anywhere, Chief, we got, we need to talk to you right after. Item number eight, to accept proposal for wastewater treatment plant boiler. You have two quotes in front of you.
War it out.
I'm not using it. They're boiling wastewater? Somebody to clean up.
Yeah.
Close yours.
Well, there was only two bids, and, um, I would like to pick the local man, Fitch Heating. He's about three thousand dollars less than Bob's Cash Fuel, for the same equipment, same job.
Does he have a timeframe, when he can do this?
Uh, he, he's been told he needs to do it before November.
Okay, I know he, they are really busy.
Yeah.
So he's barely allowed it.
You know, and they all are, and I'm not saying just him, they all are.
Yeah.
How many requests for bids did you send up? I mean, was it just?
No, it was advertised, but we also, we only direct sent to the ones who had told me they had an interest in it, one of which was C N Brown, and then they said they couldn't bid on it because they don't actually do oil boilers, so.
C N Brown doesn't do oil boilers?
No, they just suck the oil.
They do propane, yeah, they don't, they don't install the boilers, they, they will install propane boilers, but.
That's a change.
You're lucky.
So, I mean, but, no, the, the bid was advertised, it was.
Just, just curious, I mean, yeah, everybody's busy, but just.
Especially coming into this season.
Yeah, right.
Next time, rake it in the spring.
I make a motion, we accept the low bid from Fitch Heating for the, uh, boil the wastewater.
In the amount of forty-six, two seventy-seven.
Oh, two.
And two pennies. Don't forget those two pennies.
I will second it, and it is customary to go with the low bidder.
Yeah.
Unless you have some particular reason, you know, the, the past performance that.
And local does help.
There's been a motion and a second to accept the bid from Hitch Feeding, Fitch Heating.
Hitch Feeding?
Now you start drinking it. Maybe I needed to. But in the amount of forty-six thousand, two seventy-seven, and two pennies. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Very good. I'd like to, uh, say, uh, somebody just mentioned, uh, the, uh, the habit of taking the low bid.
Mm-hmm.
I've seen, uh, and probably most of you have seen, many times, it's not the way to go.
No, no.
And we pay for it every day down there, there's, there's jobs that were done on low bid, and we, we've gotta deal with it every day, and it's really, you gotta take.
But you have to have a solid reason, because of the public bid laws and so forth, not to take the low bid, unless it's very close and.
We're actually covered by being able to, all of ours have a legal disclaimer that we reserve the right to reject any and all bids.
Yeah.
Right. And that's.
You get offended too.
Legal in the state of Maine, there are other places where you have to still go through the process, um, which can be ridiculous when, for instance, um, in Chesterfield County, uh, we had fired our, um, our public safety psychiatrist, because he had been accused of improper.
Stuff.
Behavior towards female, uh, officers and firefighters. So he was, um, he was let go, and then we went out to bid on due service, he bid again, and per Virginia law, we still had to entertain the bid, and he was dramatically lower than the other, um, the other applicant, so, but we rejected his bid against.
But yes, part of that is because of an issue or experience.
You, you normally cite an issue, but actually you don't have to.
Okay.
Particularly when you go with, this is why I'm in favor of it, except for the most simple things, I always wanna issue an RFP, not a bid, an RFP automatically allows you to consider other qualifications, uh, it allows you to consider, um, things like, what's the resumes of the people who say they're gonna do the work, what's, um, you know, what history, what other projects have they done, um, whereas a bid, technically you're supposed to look at the latest number and just go with it, regardless of what other factors are, are taken, again, unless you can justify why you're rejecting the bid.
We hired them before and they screwed up, well, that's a good reason not to.
Yeah, well.
But again, part of it is to try to cover us from a lawsuit from somebody that is a low bidder loser, and, uh, which.
And we've been bidding a couple, I think we have a couple of construction projects we've had since, I know, you can, you can think of one of them on Front Street, that we went with a low bidder that we feel like we shouldn't have, that bid us a few times, but anyway. Alrighty, thank you for that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That was easy, right, Joe? That was, that was easy. Item number nine, to accept a donation of fifteen hundred dollars from the Silkman family for program supplies.
And will we accept the fifteen?
I don't know if I need to say anything, but I'm coming, in case you would like, just talk to me. I just wanna be closer, I just like you all.
There's normally a chair right here with you.
I know, right, I could've come right up next to you.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
He was a good guy, I didn't realize.
He was, we, there's a plaque up in his honor, actually, that the family put together, um, and the goal will be to do another pickleball memorial tournament around April sixth, just because that was his birthday, when they did the first one last year, so they'd like to do another one, um, so, and then the girls.
Is general supplies?
Is general, is program supplies, with, the only thing that they kind of asked was just that it would go towards something that he loved, so, uh, we're considering probably our basketballs really need to be updated, and those are actually not cheap individually, and he used to coach there, and, um, his, his daughters even helped when they became high schoolers, who coached in there, so, uh, they had asked if, what I had for thoughts, I said it'll probably be our first direction for what we really need to get done, and then, I think they'd like to do it futuristically, depending on how things go for them. Yeah.
No, and, and I would think that we would like to accommodate as much as possible if they have a direction that they feel strongly about.
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
That, that we feel strongly about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
His wife worked at Mickey's.
Yes, yes. Very lovely family, it was lovely to, he talked a lot about all his girls, so it was nice to meet all three of them, and each grandchild, except the baby, they all said something, uh, his service was very sweet. Yeah, it was very nice, which was held actually at, they did his memorial, the first tournament was his service, as well, it was very well done. Yeah, so.
So now I make a motion to accept the fifteen hundred dollars.
And I gratefully second that.
So there'd have been a motion and a second, for fifteen, to accept the fifteen hundred dollar don, uh, donation from the Silkman family for program supplies. Any other questions, annual comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying through the whole meeting for that.
Okay.
Uh, item number ten is to grant, grant blanket approval to American Legion Post twenty-eight for games of chance and be no bingo. Normally we do this.
All year round?
Yeah, normally we do it, um, we give this out in the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
And it's just, uh, the state requires it for any games of chance or bingo, um, like that, so, and we've, at the Legion, it was, when I joined, it was just done, they did it once a year, just to be done with it, so.
So moved.
And happily seconded.
Been a motion and a second to approve blanket approval for the American Legion, American Legion Post twenty-eight game of chance. Any other questions, comments? Yeah?
I'm just curious about, you, you probably answered it, where, they went from September to the end of, uh, December, so it's a yearly thing?
We, yes.
It's off to, at December.
At December, yep.
I had to get an extra year.
Yes, yeah, and like I say, normally this is, was taken care of, um, in January, um, but as, and I will say, being a part of the Legion, a lot of our games of chance, we don't do as many of them as we used to, so we don't, this, this came out because we're gonna do the fair. And, um, we'll see from there, but. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you for that.
Do we get a free bingo pad the next time?
You sure do.
You have to sing. The song Bingo, though, to give.
Oh. B-I-N-G-O, B-I-N-G-O.
Quickly moving along. Uh, item number eleven is to approve the minutes of August twelfth and August twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Go ahead, speak up. I'll swear to God, thank you.
Been a motion and a second for the August twelfth and the twenty-sixth minutes.
And they were excellent.
Both?
They were superb.
Full moved.
It should've been.
Wow. You wrote that down, right?
Yes.
Did get that, okay. So, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Item twelve, discuss other business, you have anything, Erica?
Uh, I, I do, but I'm gonna let, um, Leah, 'cause she's got all the documents, so. So first, um, we just, uh, we got an application, um, from Jane Woodman to join the, uh, Town Report Committee, if you folks wanna take a look at that.
Jane and Jessica Blunt?
I don't know. Yes, she is, isn't she already on that?
Not the Town Report Committee, she's on a couple other boards that are.
Oh, she missed one, okay, I thought she was already on.
Conservation Commission, I think Planning, she's been on.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Been a motion and a second to allow Jane, Jane Woodman. Gotta get Dr. Mike. To join the, uh.
Town Report.
Town Report Committee.
Town Report, okay, yeah.
I'm watering my tongue and I can't do a thing with it.
It's awful, so then we'll get it done. Motion and second, we already did, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Okay, and the second is, uh, for the MMA Annual Business Meeting, uh, to vote in, uh, the voting delegate and alternate, generally Erica is the official voting delegate, but you folks would normally choose amongst yourselves for the alternate.
Yep.
Somebody theoretically attends.
Dick's not here, is he? Dick is not here.
Stick dick.
Do you nominate?
Yep.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
Yep, and a motion and a second. So.
Take your own.
Yeah, don't miss the meeting. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Dick will thank us for that.
Sure he will.
I, we get to sit next to him.
So I'll fill in the rest of it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be going anyhow, just in case he.
Well, you went last year, I thought you did.
Well, I'm headed for the food.
Oh, okay.
Nice spreads.
I'll take your word for it.
Chuffing with bingo, I gotta get up to Wicked early.
Anything else for us?
No, sir.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
No. Just relax. This side, this side always has comments. I, I know you're trying to get up to Cheese House, I, I know. It'd be gone before you get there. Be gone before he gets there.
I want to know what the big draw is for dessert up there.
I don't even know what it is, but.
I think there's a twinkle in the twinkies.
Stop it, am I? Yeah, Randy, do you have any?
No.
Okay.
I have one item that, uh, I got a, a, uh, letter, email. Oh, I can do that.
Sure.
Um, I got a letter from a gal at the college, uh, Gillian Gamage. And, uh, she had, uh, made a little plea about the, uh, signs that you may have seen in other communities, hopeful. And she is a fan of those signs and you see them on the side of buildings and so forth. And she wondered if the town would consider putting one up if somebody raised the funds for it or would the town consider contributing it, or is perhaps there a place that we would prefer to see it if we could do it? So, um, I don't know her, I would be happy to reach out to her and say that, uh, what do you have in mind? She gave me the website of the guy, Charlie Ewitt, who makes these signs up, um, and, um, to, to ask her what she had in mind, what the sizes are, what the cost would be, what we would need to provide. Um, is there a place that it could be put, that, whether it's a private space or, and I was thinking of the welcome sign at, at the island as you come into town, if there was one that was on top of that. But if it's on town property, we'd need the approval of the Board, so I'm just requesting on her behalf to pursue with her, uh, you know, some kind of a plan, some kind of a, a thing to see if it is something that we would encourage her to pursue or send her to private resources somewhere else, so.
I've actually never seen any of that, so.
There's, there's one in Bay Harbor, Lewiston and Auburn, I think both have one.
Charlie Ewitt.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're fairly large, they, they go on.
Yeah, the ones that are on the set, big, you know, but I, I understand they can be small, he will custom make them.
I'm pretty sure Waterville installed one on the art there.
Yeah, so it just.
Association or any, you know, there's nothing.
It was interesting, she's a Mount Blue graduate and, uh, has done very well, and again, she's one of those self-starter and, and do something kind of people that I think we'd like to encourage to.
Absolutely.
See what you can do and bring it forward and how can we help, so, um, okay.
Look into it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I will pursue that.
Thank you, sir.
I need to find out if there's any, I mean, the message is hopeful, is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that just in general hopeful, or is there some kind of background to that?
Secret, religious or demonic?
There's no political agenda on that, but it's, it's more just a positivity thing. He started doing this, I don't know, maybe four or five years ago. I think during COVID is when he started it, during the pandemic, and, um, it was more just.
And again, it's kind of picking up speed and I don't know how far beyond the region or whatever, but, uh, I, I was curious, I was interested and, uh, I would like your blessings to pursue it. It doesn't turn out to be anything, so be it.
Do we need to have a, we can.
No, you just have given me permission to bring something back to the Board that you, you're interested in evaluating information.
Well, hopeful.
Hopefully you can get it done.
I, hopefully would be a wonderful thing. I would be hopeful.
Okay.
I'm done.
You don't, you got anything?
I want dessert.
I've already said.
This is true. The only thing I've got, apparently a little earlier, I might have said a little harsh something, it gets you a mouth. I will, the only thing I will say about this is I, I've, I'm hopeful that, you know, we can actually partnership and move forward with, with some things with them.
Yeah.
It's been my experience that in the fifty odd years that I can remember stuff, it's never happened. And so I'm hoping, you know.
They've made the suggestion and should we follow up and try and see what we can.
And I certainly hope they will.
I like the intern aspect that was mentioned, because those are areas that we have, we've talked about increasing young people's awareness of job opportunities and how it functions and community involvement, and so I'd love to see something like that develop that, um, they could learn from us and we could use their talents, yeah.
I think Joe's, uh, position with his extension for two years is, is different than when he was initially brought, you know?
It was.
And he, he had a tough job when he came here and it wasn't public relations.
I just hope this, this isn't wasting everybody's time at the end of the day, we still come up with nothing, which has always been what we've had in the past, so. We can be hopeful.
That's right.
We are with that. I know there's been a motion, is there a second?
Can I second my own motion?
Yeah, we've been here long enough, go ahead.
Yeah, I got, yeah, what else?
I will second his motion because I don't want him crying that he can't get out of.
I know. Been a motion and a second.
And a third.
To Jared. All in favor? Thank you.
Yeah, don't vote against the motion now.
It'd be the one.
Okay.